It's just a different world.
Oh, it was a good one.
Yeah. I miss commercials. The only time I want to get away from the TV, commercials were on. So I had to catch up with the commercials after the game.
Please turn off all cell phones or reduce volume.
Here comes the hammer. There we go. Georgia, you ready?
Um, you see I'm edging closer to your back?
Looking out for you.
I know, thank you.
Y'all baby her.
No, it's concern for my ears.
I'll wear that if I warm it up a little bit. Thirty seconds. Let's get ready to govern. Thank you all for coming. It's great to see this many people out on Valentine's Day. We really appreciate it. I have a feeling I know why you're here. And we really appreciate that support, too. I think the date's wrong on that clock. All right, the time is now six o'clock, so I will call to order this meeting of the City of White House Council for today, February the fourteenth, Valentine's Day of 2023. Ms. Hargis, will you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. James Wonsley.
Here.
Zach Briscoe.
Here.
Georgia Harris.
Here.
John Chambers.
Here.
Michael Lowe.
Here.
And Heath Rosenstein.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Excellent. Will you please stand if you're able and join Councilman Rosenstein if he leaves us with a word of prayer?
Lord, we thank you for this day. We thank you for having us all together, bringing us here safely. We pray that you continue to give us wisdom and guidance as we govern the citizens here in White House and that we do the best that we possibly can with you at the helm. We thank you for Valentine's Day. We love you. We thank you for the love that you've given us, that you've shared with us. And I pray and encourage us all to share that with others that we come into contact with. So thank you for these things, for everything that you've done for us in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Councilman. Please join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Texas flag?
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Man, I love it when there's a full house and those pledges sound good like that. All right, so that takes us into presentations. We have a couple of proclamations that we'll be presenting today, one of which is for Kevin East Day. And those of you that don't know, Kevin East is the executive director of Mentoring Alliance, which is a program that runs really deep here in White House and Tyler and is even branching out to other locations. And I know that Kevin East is out of the country and we have a board member that's here to receive this proclamation on his behalf. Mr. Jim Mip, will you please join me up front? All right. So thank you for being here. So the proclamation reads, whereas Kevin T. East has been leading the Mentor Alliance for the past ten years as his president and CEO, whereas Mentoring Alliance serves thousands of kids and families in the greater Tyler community, providing mentors, after-school programs, and summer camps, and whereas Mentoring Alliance is a driving force in delivering tangible help and eternal hope to all the families they serve, now therefore I, James Wonsley, Mayor of the City of White House, text us due proclaim, February the first, let's backdate it a little bit, 2023, as Kevin T. East Day in the City of White House, Texas, in honor of the ten years of faithful service to the White House, Texas community. And witness whereof I have here and two set by hand and cause the seal of the City of White House to be affixed this first day of February 2023. Awesome. If you want to take a, somebody to take a picture?
You selfie.
Oh, you selfie. You brought us now?
We can photo bomb that.
Awesome. All right, and there's your copy to take. I wonder if he finds his way back home. Thank you. All right, we have another proclamation to read here. It is Patrick Mahomes here. Well, I'll settle back down and read this as a part of the council. All right, Patrick Mahomes Day. I don't know about the rest of you, but Monday wasn't a Monday. Monday was a Monday after an amazing Super Bowl win. So once again, super proud of what's happening at the highest level from somebody that played football here. All right, this proclamation reads, whereas Patrick Mahomes, a 2014 graduate of White House High School, is an extremely successful quarterback, and whereas Patrick originally entered the NFL as a tenth overall draft pick, first round of the 2017 NFL Draft by Kansas City, and whereas Patrick continues his sixth season as the quarterback for the Kansas City Chiefs, is a three-time AFC champion, a five-time Pro Bowler, and whereas during his career, Patrick has been awarded many accolades, including the National Football League's Most Valuable Player for 2018 and 2022 seasons, Sportsman of the Year by Sports Illustrated in 2020, Super Bowl Champion for Super Bowl fifty-four, and Super Bowl MVP for Super Bowl fifty-four, and whereas despite his increased fame and notoriety, Patrick continues to serve as an example of character and leadership. And whereas the Kansas City Chiefs and Patrick will compete and win in Super Bowl fifty-seven, and now therefore I, James Wonsley, Mayor of the City of White House, do proclaim Sunday, February the twelfth, 2023, to be Patrick Mahomes Day in the City of White House, Texas. And witness whereof I have here and two set by hand and cause the seal of the city to be affixed on this tenth day of February 2023. Thank you. All right, so those are things that make us proud in this community, and we have one other thing that makes us super proud in this community. We have a new officer joining us today, Chief Robson. One of my favorite times in council meetings. I get to bring in a new officer. So I want to say first, before we leave it about who Officer Nichols is, this took a long time to get here. Trust me, he can tell you. So he went to the academy. We actually hired him back in July and he finished the academy up recently and passed the test. And we've got him in his orientation. We're going to get him going on the street pretty soon. Let me tell you a little bit about who he is and then we'll do a swear again. So Officer Nichols, another proud moment. He spent eight years in the United States Marine Corps, so that's something that I'm always proud of. Before he moved back home here to East Texas, he spent the last six years, also another good thing, working for Texas Department of Criminal Justice. So he worked in the prison system as a sergeant over corrections and security threat rooms. And like I say, he graduated from the academy back on February second. And he says he is super excited about being able to serve the community. He lives here in White House and he's super excited about that. And I'll tell you, we're thrilled to have him. He is an example for all of our officers, what we expect. He's come in and every morning he's there checking out a car, even though he doesn't even check out a parking lot. That involves a lot of things, checking lights, checking, make sure it's not damaged, making sure the video system works. So he's out there every morning doing that, so I'm very excited to see what we're seeing so far. You got a lot of family here. Do you want to introduce your family?
I do. I have my wife, my two children, my dad, my mom, stepdad, and my in-laws, and my sister-in-law.
About half the audience.
Yes.
Yeah, it's a good turnout. So if you're ready to wrap the end, then repeat after me. I, Aaron Nichols.
I, Aaron Nichols.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of police officer.
Of police officer.
Of the State of Texas.
Of the State of Texas.
And I will.
And I will.
To the best of my.
To the best of my.
Ability.
Ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And laws.
And laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
We also got in our new badges.
Oh, wow.
So we're very excited that. We've been having to give out some older ones, some new ones, and there is your card as well.
Good day.
Excellent.
Yeah, that's awesome. These are made out of metal. That's great.
Thank you so much. Well, we know how tough Chief Robson grades new recruits, so welcome aboard. And it's a testament to Aaron's character and aptitude to make it through that process and welcome to the force. All right, that takes us to the item, community interests. Is there anything? Oh, a few things to discuss. Ms. Black?
Mayor and Council, just a few things to update you on. The Farmers Market will open on Saturday, March fourth, at their same location they used last year, down at about 105 East Main. And we continue to work with our architects, engineers, surveyors on facilities planning. So they are in the process of finishing up the site survey and starting, we're about 10% on construction documents, so we're working through that process. We did receive one response to our RFI for broadband. And I've not had a chance to get with our consultant on that, to go through and review that, but we will be doing that in the coming weeks. And we have released our Parks and Trails Plan request for qualifications, so that remains out for any firm that would like to submit for that.
Okay. Excellent. Any questions or comments on community interests? Anything that we missed, Council?
I'm ready for the Farmers Market to be back up.
I've never been more happy to see scratching and digging in my front yard. It is so cool. Come on, fiber.
Absolutely.
Yep, Solawaterburg opened up too, so it was nice to see. Good point. Good taxes coming this way. Gas station area, it was nice. Growing.
Absolutely. All right, we can move on, I think. That takes us to public forum. Ms. Susan, I didn't see anybody sign up. Is that true?
That's correct.
So we'll slip down to the consent agenda, item G. You have two items on the consent agenda. We have previous minutes, minutes from the previous meeting, and a request to join Texas Smart Buy membership program. So unless you want to take one of those items off for consideration on the agenda, I'll entertain a motion to confirm the consent agenda as presented. I'll make the motion to approve as presented. Councilor Briscoe makes a motion. Councilwoman Harris, second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. All right, with that, the motion carries. Let's go down to the action items. Item H, other action items, ordinances, resolutions, and public hearings. Number one is discussion, consideration, and action on agreement with Azovar to provide a franchise audit fee. Who's taking this one?
How about Mayor? I believe over the last couple of years, it's been on staff's list to look at our franchise fees, make sure those enterprises that are operating within the city are paying the correct franchise fees that we should be collecting in accordance with our agreements. But to be honest, we're just not getting around to it with a lot of full plates. I don't know that we have it in our bandwidth to do this internally. So when Ted Campbell with Azovar reached out to me, we met up and their proposed contract is included in your packet for your review. And what they could do, or what any firm could do for a franchise fee audit is much deeper and greater than what staff could do. They will look at every address within the city and make sure those franchise fees are being collected by the franchisee appropriately and then passed on to the city in accordance with our agreement. So Mr. Campbell is here. If you have any specific questions about their contract, but staff is recommending approval tonight.
Council, we need to bring him up for any questions? Mr. Campbell, you want to go ahead and come up, please?
I recall seeing a prize.
State your name and address.
A dollar.
So they will retain a certain percentage of whatever they collect above and beyond what we're currently receiving.
Okay.
So you're confident there's money out there?
Well, it's hopeful. We don't get paid unless you get paid.
Okay.
Can you kind of describe what a franchise is?
Sure. You have companies that are using your right-of-way, so you would have a franchise agreement with them, cable, gas, electric, telecom, internet providers. And if your agreement requires them to pay you a franchise fee. Excuse me. Some of these agreements haven't been looked at in several years, so we'll look at those agreements, try to help you strengthen them if we can. We'll follow state and federal guidelines on that. And we'll do a full audit of each franchise. Now, some of them take longer. They can range from six months to, it could be eighteen months. You know, we're really at the mercy of the company we're auditing because many of them are out of state and then sometimes they'll drag their fee. And we're going to give them as much time as they need to get us what we need to look at. But we're looking for a lot of different things, not just the taxes, but also to make sure that there's not coding errors. And that's where you can find, we just did one for Lafayette, Louisiana. We found fifteen thousand coding errors in their cable audit.
Good grief.
So they're collecting the franchise tax from those fifteen thousand, but the coding error, those dollars just sit in a fund that never gets dispersed to the city, and it's not incumbent upon them to do an internal audit.
I see.
It doesn't make sense for them financially to do it. Obviously, we're going to do it. And Azovar, most companies will charge an upfront fee to do these audits. I'm grateful that we're able, we do these audits nationwide strictly on a contingency, no matter what size the city. It's something that we built our company on since 1996. We do sales tax, hotel audit, short-term rental. We do a range of different types of audit services. But our company was built on helping cities find additional franchise tax revenues. So we're willing to accept the risk and the time and materials upfront. And we have a lot of small cities in East Texas. We serve Mann, Chandler, Blakewater, White Oak is a recent client. So it doesn't matter what size the city you are. Sometimes you'd be surprised, smaller cities, smaller towns are going to find a lot of revenue. Larger cities, you might not find anything. It just depends. We don't know until we get in there and do the work.
So what's the contingency fee percentage?
Thirty-nine percent.
Thirty-nine, and that's an add-on, correct?
Sir?
That's the add-on to what they're paying?
Yeah, it's for new revenue savings or prospective funds.
But you're only getting the, you're only paying us after you get the additional revenue. We're not going to say, here's the audit, this is what we found. Once you get the dollars into your account, then we will bill you, we don't hold it back. We'll bill you thirty-nine percent. And we also have, that thirty-nine percent contingency also includes us using our legals, our legal group to back us up and negotiate with these companies. So if there's any type of pushback or there's a settlement, sometimes there is. I mean, some of these amounts can range, there was one city I was listening in, you know, several hundred thousand dollars. So obviously lawyers get involved. It won't be your lawyers. It's on our dime. That's what the thirty-nine percent is helping you negotiate. We're not trying to add any additional work or cost to your city staff.
Is this industry regulated?
The...
For your company? Is it regulated?
My company?
Yeah, what you're doing.
According to state guidelines, as far as audits are concerned, we have to follow the best practices when it comes to audits. We can, some, you know, some statutes will only let us go back, like the telecom audits are the strictest ones statutorily. You can only go back a couple of years. Where cable audit, we might be able to go back five years or more. Typically, four years is about the max.
Good.
But it depends on what the statute is for that particular franchise, and we have to follow those guidelines.
Okay. This is probably a crazy question, but what about something like Netflix? I've read somewhere these municipalities are getting revenue from these little hidden jewels like Netflix. Is it, I mean, is it, you need?
It's coming through, it's coming through the line.
Right.
That is in your right-of-way, you have the franchise agreement. Now, if it's over a satellite, that's different. Then you would probably do revenue from whatever company is using that, they're using Netflix. Now, I will use, I'm going to use the simplest example that would not have applied maybe twenty-five years ago. You have your typical cable company, you have a home shopping network. Well, that cable company, satellite optimum, they make money off the home shopping network every time somebody purchased something.
That's correct.
From the home shopping network. Now, according to your franchise agreement, they are supposed to pay you gross percent of their gross revenue.
Oh, wow.
Now, the cable company is thinking gross revenue of the bill that I send to that resident. They're not qualifying all the other revenue they're now making up here. So when you buy that frying pan on home shopping network, the city is supposed to get the five percent or the three percent franchise fee on those purchases. Unless they're audited, the cable company says, well, no one's paying any attention. We're only going to pay the franchise tax on what's on the resident's bill that they get every month.
Well, I hope you dig a lot, so, you know, go fishing.
We will. It will take time, so that's why we always ask for you to be...
All kidding aside, fair is fair. Fair is fair, right? So I salute you and I salute the staff for doing this, so who knows?
And we'll get, we'll give you probably a quarterly update, but these things do take time.
Sure.
They take, I mean, I've seen some of the auditors that literally have to go through thousands and thousands of addresses on their laptops to, you actually have a couple of auditors based here in White House, Texas, that works for Azovar. You should be proud of that, yeah.
Good.
Couple of college students that are doing a great job for us.
How long is this contract? I saw something, twelve months auto-renew? Is that right? What, it's a twelve-month contract?
Yeah, all of our contracts in Texas, we never tie the hands of the council, so they're always a one-year agreement, and it can automatically renew unless otherwise stated, unless you say to us in writing.
So if we want to go out for RFP in twelve months?
You can.
We would let you know and we would just be month-to-month after that?
So how long has it been since we've audited our franchise?
I have no idea. I don't know that...
I don't know that we ever had.
Good. I mean, I salute y'all. Good job. I mean, it's just...
Thank you.
So if it's a eighteen-month runway to get all of them and the contracts for a year, will it be dispersments before the full, before the full discovery process? Or are you going to wait for the full initial discovery for dispersment?
Well, we would hope that you would continue the contract as long as we continue to do the digging and kicking the tires. I mean, ending it after one year, there would have to be something really relevant that would cause you to say, stop what you're doing.
Right.
Hopefully, I've never been with the company since 2019. I've never seen that happen.
Okay. It was odd to me to see a contract that could end before the initial discovery is completed. That's why I was asking the question.
But it's just, it's just good faith to keep all the contracts. Most of my contracts have other services in there, like hotel audits and stuff like that. So one-year agreements is normally a city, if you give them a five-year agreement, they'll come back and their city attorney will say.
Right.
It's kind of hard to do that, so it's one year is pretty standard.
There's some statutory language that a contract can't bind a future counsel, and so they're just avoiding.
You could sign a long-term contract. I've just...
You can.
It's just something that it's not, I've been doing this for eighteen years in Texas. It's always come up. So I said, why don't you just keep it one-year contracts?
Right.
That way, it gives you a good, really good reason to bring us in and question what we're doing after a year and make sure everything is moving like they're supposed to be moving.
So will you guys disappear until you come back and share everything? Or are there going to be updates that are provided?
We will provide you updates.
Okay.
We'll have a brief onboarding session with the city of things that we need to get started. And then, especially since I live in Tyler, I mean, I'm not, all my Tyler folks, all my East Texans folks, I see almost on a monthly basis at regular, like, city manager lunches. So if we're doing anything wrong or I'm not communicating with them, they're going to let me know. So, oh, Truik is also a client. We're doing their franchise audits as well.
I've got one final question. So the percentage that you guys capture, is that based off of actual captured funds? Or is there any language in there that would say there was a potential for the city to make two hundred thousand and they didn't because of their code? So we found those, so your company is eligible for thirty-nine percent, even though we're not going to get that money?
Now, thirty-nine percent is, that's a good question. Thirty-nine percent is on the actual revenue that you receive as a result of our audit work. Not the potential, or maybe y'all should have gotten it back then, but you didn't.
Okay.
And we're not going to be able to deliver it to you. So it's pretty clear-cut. You don't get paid. We can't invoice you going into this contract.
I just want to clarify, you're adding that on to, say, someone owes a hundred dollars and they're paying a hundred and thirty-nine dollars? Or are we eating it out of the hundred?
No, so if you get, if you get a hundred dollars, then you'll owe us thirty-nine.
So it's not an add-on fee? We're taking it out of what you recover?
You're sharing.
Thirty-nine percent. Okay.
Well, honestly, since we're doing all the work upfront, Texas is the only state that has thirty-nine. It's usually forty-five percent.
Is there competition? Are there other companies out there doing it?
The competitors, I mean, I worked for a company for twelve and a half years, and I would never even come to your city and offer franchise audits because it would cost you ten thousand dollars to do just a cable audit, plus a contingency fee. And a ten thousand dollars to do an electric audit. And only the cities, so what did I get in Texas? I got Beaumont to do an audit and I got Dallas to do it because they could afford to pay the upfront money. And I always thought it was a shame that my smaller, medium cities couldn't afford that money upfront. And so I think we're, and they were taking forty-five percent on top of the ten thousand. And so I thought it was great when I was told, when I joined Azovar in 2019, oh, no, everyone's contingency fee, no matter who you are, what size you are. And I was like, well, that's, this is going to be an easy sell. Because you don't have, it's zero amount in your budget.
Yeah.
There's no risk. So...
It's a win-win deal.
That, and so the competition in any state, California, Illinois, Missouri, and Louisiana, we just started doing franchise audits literally a year ago. And I now have thirty-two towns. I have Reston and Lafayette are my biggest ones. All the other ones are like under five thousand in population.
So I'm feeling some sticker shock coming from over here. Or maybe, maybe we don't know. We don't know what the...
Well, it used to, reminds me of the collections industry, which I used to work in. And we would, they were add-on fees, but we had lots of competition. So back in the days, it started at twenty-some percent, and now it's eight percent, nine percent. Thirty-nine percent is just, that's a lot.
Yeah.
And then taking that out of what you're recovering, normally it's an add-on to the client. So that's, that's not sticker shock. It's just, I'm in awe that, one, you can get away with charging thirty-nine percent. And two, that it's coming out of what you're collecting, like you're not passing it along to the individual, which is... Again, and that's why I asked you the question, is there competition? Because obviously, there's not a lot of it, or else that's going to start changing. And it may not be highly regulated either, or else that's going to start changing too. But, so that's, that's where my questions are coming from.
Yeah, I understand.
But it's good work. It's great, but that is a concern down the road.
Any other questions?
Any more questions?
Ted, can you talk about maybe the work that goes into the actual audit itself? Like what all you guys look into to determine if these are owed?
Sure. So we're first going to study the franchise audit, the franchise agreement with the company. There are some cities that are concerned that new work is going on in the right-of-way, and we don't even know if that company has an agreement with us. So if that comes up, we're going to bring that to your attention. If someone's laying line, and I have that up near Texocana, it's a city that he literally drove around. They're laying these lines in our right-of-way. I don't even know who this is. And they haven't contacted us. So part of our job is to make sure the city's getting every penny you're supposed to get by anyone that's using your right-of-way, whether they have a franchise agreement or not. And so if they don't have one, or it's being misused, and then you've got cities like, all over Louisiana, I hear it, there's one telephone company, and I always hear it all the time, not going to name it publicly, but they haven't gotten a check from them in two years or in a year. But yet, they have actual council members that are using their service. Why haven't they gotten their franchise? So we have, so there's a range of issues that have to be studied depending on who you're auditing. And then the other issue is looking at those addresses. But especially with cable audits, because everyone has an address, and electric audits, because everyone has an address, to make sure that they're coded correctly. And it's not necessarily that they might be outside the city limits or inside the city limits. Sometimes the address... Sometimes the address is misspelled in their system. And so they, you don't actually get the revenue, we have to correct the address misspelling. And that takes people like we have here and the auditors we have here locally, takes them hours and hours and hours to look for those exceptions and make those corrections. You know, we will keep you updated and, and along the way, it's just, it's just, it, it's, there's a lot to it. But it's not something that we can't handle because we've been, I mean, this is what we did, this is what you're paying us today.
So also, I want to make clear, so on franchise fees, most likely if you look at your bill, it's an itemized fee or part of an itemized fee that you're paying to the provider. And a lot of times it's just not getting passed on correctly to the city. So we, we don't have any way to know that short of doing a professional franchise, to be honest.
And you might have a franchise agreement, I don't know. I mean, we have towns that will have like a water tower and they'll have cell, you know, up there. And you might have a franchise agreement for that, so it's not just necessarily in the right-of-way. Are they paying correctly like they're supposed to be paying? And that's a new and growing issue for cities because the state has loosened up the regulations and it kind of like, it's kind of like a wild west out there as to where they can put these cellphone, I mean, probably, probably not so much in, in a community like White House. But in a, in a more of a medium city, they're now allowing them to put up, put these.
No.
These.
Their own buildings, their own water tanks, their own everything.
They're on buildings, you might not even, you might not even know they're on a building.
May even have them on a drone, who knows?
Yeah, and so you have a right to, A, know where they're at. And, uh, you know, some cities do want to regulate them for aesthetics and those types of things. Uh, that's, that's probably not an issue for, for, for the city of White House.
Good job.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, any further discussion?
I would just, I would just say that we would need to relook at this after twelve months. See what type, you know, what kind of service that they're doing. If they're doing great, that's awesome, but still I feel as though we should, thirty-nine percent's a lot, uh, that is a lot. And there's other, if there's other companies out there that can do it for less, or maybe we can renegotiate and get it lower at twelve months. But, yeah, let's see what they can do, if they can bring us in, uh, more business, great. It's, it's, it's a good concept, it's a niche market, it's wonderful. Uh, but as we look at our bottom line and just, we just discovered, I just discovered that, hey, this is out there, somebody can help us bring in money. Of course, our job is to try to niche and, and chisel away as much as they're taking and bring more to us. So if we can find others out there that'll do it for less, great, but still keep the service, wonderful. So my recommendation would be to, yeah, let's go ahead and prove it, let's get going, but also relook at it in twelve months.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the agreement with ASVAR to provide the franchise fee on it.
Second.
All right, I have a motion from Councilwoman Harris and a second from Councilman Chambers. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed, say no. With that, the motion carries. I feel like we learned a lot just now, it's pretty awesome. All right, that takes us to item H two, discussion, consideration and action on dedicated fiber redundancy with the city of Tyler. I think we were expecting, do you want to talk about this in the second?
Mayor and council, as a part of our ongoing discussions about fiber broadband in the city and after the December twenty-third incident where everybody was without internet power and we've been, Mayor Wonsley has been speaking with Benny Otzepony, the IT director with the city of Tyler, specifically about redundancy for city operations. And if, I don't know if you were all aware, but we have dedicated fiber lines that connect us to the city of Tyler at their south police station over at Walker Park. Uh, but that is our only connection to them. And so Benny was gracious enough to reach out to our fiber provider and see what it would take to do a second line run to Tyler City Hall. Uh, so effectively creating a ring for us and our connection to the city of Tyler. And he did receive a preliminary quote and I put that number in the packet. However, that's not a formal finalized quote from Optimum. And so I would ask that you table that discussion tonight until we get that back from them and make sure that we have the right amount in front of you. I kind of got a little ahead of him, I think, on this, I got, I got excited about it, being able to not provide that redundancy for our operations. But we, he wanted to go back and check just a few more things before we finalize that. So staff's recommendations that you table this discussion before your next council meeting.
All right. Yeah, for those that don't know, when the cell tower went out and, you know, internet service here went out, the phone up here was ringing, we had, we had internet here at the ci- at the city because it was a dedicated line. But something could happen to that, you know, the same accident that happened in that corner could happen somewhere else and we would be down. And as we're looking to build redundancy throughout the entire city, this is what would add redundancy to the city of White House. Now we just need redundancy to our cellphone providers and redundancy to any provider that comes in that provides, uh, broadband service and we're working towards that end as well, but this will protect us. So a motion to table? Sounds good, bringing it into the next, uh, the next meeting should be enough time, you think? All right.
I think that's great, yeah.
All right, so that takes us on to item three.
We need to actually make a motion.
I'll make a motion to table this until the next time.
I'll second.
All right, got a second, Councilwoman Low, heard that first, um, any, any further discussion? All those opposed, all those in favor say yes.
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 Any opposed, say no? All right, with that is motioned, or it's tabled.
You're like, you're trying to keep us on our toes tonight.
I'm all over the place.
See if we're listening.
I guess so, any change it from aye to yes? Man, I'm doing my shirt a little bit.
My tie didn't match, I'm all up. All right, I take the item H three, Cory Drive Traffic Data Update.
All right.
This was awesome.
Yeah.
This is like a big deal.
Yes.
All right, and Mayor and Council, I know I spoke Cory, but I'm having trouble spelling the street with Cory. I can't read correctly, I don't know why, but.
Still good.
Um, so providing the, uh, update on, on the speed study. Let's know we placed the traffic data collector in the same location as to at least create, uh, as similar conditions as possible as before. This is post-stop signs.
Yeah.
Um, so, I don't, I don't know if you have this one, I can read off the other. Uh, but I want to point out, I don't know the right term here, but if you look at the second half on twenty-three, you can, I call it a steeper, sharper slopes now. So what it did was move most of the traffic towards the twenty-one, twenty-two mile per hour zone as compared to before where the, that peak was up in the twenty-four, twenty-five. And it's also not as steep. So all that means is all that traffic, a huge portion of the traffic is now traveling between roughly eighteen and twenty-seven miles per hour.
Yeah, it looks like, uh, sixty-six percent reduction in many of the speeds above twenty-five miles per hour. You look at the speed of thirty-one miles per hour specifically, it's thirty-one now and it was a hundred and thirty-one before.
Right, so that all definitely dropped down a lot.
Man, that's a great demonstration.
Yeah.
So a couple of, of other stats, uh, just to point out. Approximately, uh, under twenty-five before was approximately seventy-six, or sixty-seven percent, and now we're at eighty-five percent.
Wow.
So the big change is there, as well as some change on the twenty-five to thirty-five. Uh, and obviously you can tell on the chart there that, that thirty-one above has really had an impact. And that's going to be from the stop signs put there at Stacy. Uh, so this is all that data around Stacy and Worth that we're seeing. And I'm getting good reports back from conversations with some of the people up there that they're seeing a, a drop in speeds.
Good.
And I would say that the total traffic is actually pretty close to the same. We're still seeing those numbers of quiet ways up there, about a thousand a day.
Yeah, they all stacked up towards the left, which is where we want them. We've got, you know, twice as many people driving fifteen miles an hour going through the ramp.
It's interesting what it did, which it, in the end, um, it produced the result that we all desired, which is to get people to slow down and brought the eighty-five percen- eighty-fifth percentile that we talked about last time. It came from thirty to twenty-five, which is the speed limit, which is now more appropriate. And the average speed drops from twenty-five point four to twenty-one point seven.
That's awesome.
Excellent. So there are some desired results and even overall the twenty-three data, you still see a majority of the people traveling within a reasonable speed there. So it, it, there's a positive on that side too, that it's not hurting the twenty-three to twenty-five you're seeing on the other side. They're able, I guess the short way of saying this is they're able to still get to twenty-five miles an hour.
Yeah.
Which is the speed limit, so you're not slowing people down so much that now we see an average of twenty. So it has an appropriate effect.
And it's not diverting traffic in another area, it's not just relocating the issue.
I, I think the numbers, I was trying to find the numbers and I could not hold it in time, but I believe the numbers are almost the same. I want to say it was around nine hundred and an hour. Yeah, it's about the same.
Excellent.
Any questions?
No, that's great stuff, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any further discussion or questions on the side? Need about what, three stop signs on memory lane now, Councilman Low?
Uh, that's coming one day. Because traffic flow is unbelievable, yeah.
That was a great solution for that specific, uh, road. There's other traffic or speed suppression techniques that we can use, but that was a great demonstration of just, you know, what we could put there to make, without having to put speed bumps or speed zones.
Very true.
Yeah, great work on that.
Yeah.
All right, so that takes us down to, uh, item four, discussion, consideration and action on the budget for Christmas in the park. All right, here we go, Christmas already.
Mayor and council, as you all know, we normally approve our budget in August for the fiscal year beginning in October. However, uh, because we did Christmas in the park so much bigger this last year and would like to do that again this next year, uh, it creates some logistical challenges waiting until August to begin putting deposits and reserving, uh, the equipment and personnel that we need for this type of an event. So I asked Stephanie to go ahead and put together a budget for Christmas in the park for two thousand twenty-three. Whatever you all approve tonight, we will make sure is incorporated in the budget for the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four fiscal year. Uh, but we wanted to go ahead and get to this before you, so that if we want to do some of those things similar to what we did last year, we would have the funding allocated and then we could start putting some of those deposits down. So with that, I'll turn it over to Stephanie.
Please join us up here, please.
Discuss.
All right, Mayor and Council, um, really, it's all before you, so if you have any questions, I can answer. I've done a great job talking about why we need this, so, um, it makes it a lot easier if we have this squareway because then we can actually start working on it before it's October.
So how popular was the skate rink?
It was busy from the time it opened until the time.
I was just asked a few times and I was literally floored at how many people were on that thing.
I couldn't believe it.
The line was basically almost to the fence.
Yeah, it was about thirty kids deep all day.
And they kept doing it over and over and over, it was like.
Is this for the same size then?
This is for the same size, it's a little more expensive because their prices are increasing.
Yeah. Well, if there was a line of thirty kids constantly.
It was unbelievable.
Would it, would it be beneficial?
Totally waiting for it to drop off and I was going to be like, hey, no more people, let's get it out. Like, that, that's where I was, Heath, and I was shocked.
Well, should we look at the next size up?
I don't like ice skating.
I know you don't, but, I mean.
I'm looking at it.
I was waiting on it to fail and it didn't.
Well, I'm looking at parent's side, we bring the kids out, then we have to wait in line. We might only have an hour or two to spend at this thing, and if we're waiting so, so much, just because of our skating rink is so small, if you can ask maybe what's the additional to maybe add, I don't know, ten square feet, hun- I don't know how much we would need.
I think they have different sizes, they need to.
Yeah, they do, they have up to eighty by eighty, I think.
What is this one?
This one was forty by forty, it was the same size we had last year.
Eighty by eighty?
That's double, but I don't think.
I'm not saying go double, but, maybe a little bit, maybe a little, I don't know, fifty by fifty maybe?
It's not a terrible idea to explore the next size up.
I tried to get a vote on it, but they haven't gone back to me.
Okay.
Stephanie, I know your kids went through the line a couple of times, how long do you think the wait was?
But, uh, I'm, it was not that long.
I sent my kids to go get in line and then went and looked at the vendor routes or, or did something else, but my kids are a little bit older and I can do that, but.
So when you get your skates and you get on there, is it timed?
They time it about ten minutes, so it's about twenty-minute turnover is what the supervisor had told me in the beginning.
Okay.
So each group goes in and about that line that you saw all day was one group or two groups in line. So it was twenty minutes for most of the time. During the peak of it, it may have taken forty-five minutes or so, but it, the line not really long, they did kind of cut it down a little bit, trying to do it now.
So I'm on the same page with Heath on this, and I think because we did it last year and it was so popular, there's going to be more word of mouth and there's a good chance that we see increased numbers doing it again and probably advertising it earlier. It's not a terrible idea to just go ahead and tell them, we'll take the fifty by fifty.
Yeah, I, I asked for the next size up.
We're going on the street!
Because we have, we have so much space for them to set up. Because of the size of eighty by eighty, the space for them to put on skates has to be bigger. And so they require, like for the forty by forty, we needed a sixty by eighty space. And so an eighty by eighty would have to assume would be twenty-five.
Maybe a fifty by fifty, maybe just see what, just see what the next size is up.
Yeah, I'm thinking that the next size is sixty by forty.
Sixty by forty, okay, it's twenty-one. So did we get pretty good feedback off of that specific vendor, the person that provided that?
I thought they were okay. The, the guy that was in charge of the operation was, he was in contact with me all day. He, I mean, as soon as someone fell about hurt, where they're actually bleeding, he called me. Um, I mean, these type of things happen, the kids like cut themselves on the skates or, or they smash their fingers or something. But, I mean, he was really on it, like he called me as soon as something happened, I mean, they needed it, so.
I did, yeah, I saw him setting it up in the rain, I mean, they were out there setting it up even though it was raining, that was pretty impressive, uh, and, yeah.
They were here when they said they were going to be here, they did what they said they were going to do, they provided great service. As a parent with a child going through the line, the waiver was simple, the skates, the turnover was fast, I mean.
The only thing I could ask for is stadium seating so I can people watch. I mean, we had the, we had the Grinch come to White House and he was out there skating and when a kid would fall, he'd go, huh. We didn't pay him, he just showed up, it's just a guy that showed up, he had a Grinch outfit.
We also had, uh, that Christmas globe inflatable thing, do you not need to do that again?
We broke that.
So on the budget, I just have other activity because that, I think, would need to be changed to something a little bit different. I don't know exactly what that looks like right now, but they have a lot of other options. They have a like eighteen-foot tall inflatable jumper that I think kids would probably have more kind of it. Um, and then they have some other things too, but they all range around that same price. So I think with the same pricing as the globe, but it'll probably be something different.
Okay.
That one was a little bit confusing because the staging area inside the globe is also bouncy. So kids would use it as a trampoline and their parents were like, stay still.
Yeah, and it did, it burst.
Yeah.
And he called me immediately and told me they were working on repairing it, so, I mean, the company did an amazing job, so.
That's great.
They really did.
I would say, uh, just a thought, if we, uh, if we go ahead and approve this, if we approve it with a twenty percent increase possibility to give a little bit of floating room for them to, to talk about that next size up, if they can do it, they don't have to come back to us and say, hey, can we get more funds? But if we can do maybe a twenty percent floater.
Or is this just a baseline that we're proving?
We're not locked into these numbers if we.
This is based off of the flow that they sent me.
Right, so we can adjust it as we go, if we need to go up or go down.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we did confirm with the DJ, the amount would be four hundred for all day, so.
And that's something we didn't have this year and I think would have been a great thing to have because he really kept a lot going on, like if we had anybody lost in town or a lost kid he was stepping in for free this year and I think it's better if we actually hire him on.
Yeah.
I feel like that's not a fair ask, he was four days.
And I got to sing, so. Hallelujah.
Can we do, uh, some giveaways too, some drawings, raffles? That we don't charge for, but we give away maybe ten-dollar gift cards throughout the night for our.
So last year there was a, a pretty big amount of donor funds that came in. So I think us agreeing to fund Christmas in the park leaves opportunities for the chamber to do some things like that, you know, with the funds that they were kicking in last year, but I think that's a great idea. To do, you know, whatever would, whatever would incentivize people to come out or whatever they want, however they want to give back to the community, I think that's great.
It, it was beyond anything I would ever imagined, it was just incredible. Just to see those kids' faces, they had a ball, you know? I think the mom and dads had more fun than the kids, you know?
Yeah, they have free time.
Just a good time, I mean, you know?
And if you're under the age of eight, they didn't know it wasn't nice, they thought it was like.
Yeah, that's true.
We can find the Grinch, we need to pay him. I gotta see that.
I think the Grinch was with Lace Tribe.
Oh, he was with Lace Tribe?
I think so.
Okay, that makes sense.
I think so too, because we took a picture out with him at their booth.
It's better if we don't know who he is.
Maybe we can have Lizzie come in and wear her Grinch costume.
Should do great.
Still from you again.
Um, okay, well, this is the, I guess this is the baseline budget as presented.
Yeah.
And we come back for, uh, and this'll help a lot, you know, we can start reserving these things, it kinda gives us a budgetary item to start reserving these things, so.
Yeah.
We have a tree out there that can have segments added to it. Is there a growth plan for our tree? It's a Christmas decoration, is it big enough for you? Alright.
We can work on some.
The tree, the tree that we have out there, the giant lighted tree, it's modular, you can add another piece to the base of it and go up another ten feet.
Let's go far, man.
I mean, it might be too much in one year.
Race for the stars.
Those creamery rolls are just getting taller, so.
It's gonna be pushing into that tree over there.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve this Christmas budget and, and we need to add on at some point in the future, make adjustments, we will do so, but for now, just so you can get things going.
A motion from Councilwoman Harris, and a second from Councilwoman Briscoe.
I'm excited.
There we go.
I am too.
Yeah. Um, any further discussion? Alright, all of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no, but that the motion carries. Alright, that takes us into, takes us into executive session, so we're gonna be going across the hall into an executive session. We'll be over there for a little while, we'll reconvene to come over here, won't hurt our feelings if you're not here when we get back, but, uh, let me get through this, so pursuant to chapter five five one, Texas Government Code, the city council reserves a right to convene into executive session from time to time as deemed necessary during the meeting. City council may convene to executive session to discuss any or all of the following topics pending or contemplating litigation or to seek the advice of city attorney pursuant to section five five one dot zero seven one, possible purchase, exchange, lease and value of real estate pursuant to section five five one dot zero seven two, personnel matters pursuant to section five five one dot zero seven four, economic development negotiations pursuant to section five five one dot zero eight seven. We'll be meeting in this, uh, executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code, section five five one dot zero seven two. The council will convene to executive session to discuss the purchase, exchange and lease value of real property in Town Center Main Street, TCMI zoning on Bascom Road. The time is now six fifty-one and we will now convene to executive session. The time is now six fifty-one and we will now convene to executive session.